Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County Forum for candidates for Mill Creek City Council Positions Two and Three. I am your moderator Lynn Carpenter, past president of the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County. All candidates for Mill Creek City Council were invited to attend a forum. Candidates participating in this forum are Nicholas Swett, Stephanie Vidneal for Positions Two, and Benjamin Brials and Connie Allison for Positions Three. Candidates for Positions One, Four, and Six are participating in a separate candidate forum. The League thanks all the candidates for running for office and their willingness to serve the community if elected and for participating in this forum. It is the policy of the League to be nonpartisan. Therefore, we neither endorse nor oppose candidates or parties. We do take positions on issues that we have studied and on which we have reached consensus. Ground rules for this forum have been set, were sent ahead of time to all candidates. So the opening and closing, let's see, I gotta get this. The opening and closing questions have been sent to the candidates, but other questions have not been shared. However, we made each candidate aware of the issues that this forum was likely to cover, and we thank all the community members who sent us recommendations about local issues. I will pose the questions. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond. 90 seconds will be allowed for answers to the final question, and I will state this clearly when we get there. We're using a countdown timer visible to all candidates. It shows elapsed time and alerts the candidates when there are 15 seconds left and when time is up. Time limits on answers will be strictly enforced. When you see the timer turn red and hear the chime, you are done. I will change the starting order for each question rotating through all candidates to ensure a random and fair sequence. So for the first set of, for the first question, I will ask first Mr. Swett, then Ms. Vidneal, then Mr. Brials, and then Ms. Allison. So what qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate for this position, Mr. Swett? Come off mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Very good. I've had very little experience. This is my first time running, so I'm just been watching some of the stuff going on in the meetings. I see what's going on right now, and I wanna head in another direction. So just, just a little background. I've worked in many different jobs and fields, from corrections to working in the steel mill. So I just know what's going on in my neighborhood and in the town. And I think I can make a big difference by sending us in a different direction.
Thank you. Ms. Vidneal, what qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate?
Thank you, and I want to thank the League for inviting us today and all the work you do to make sure that we have an informed electorate. Thank you very much. As I said, my name is Stephanie Vidneal, and I am the most qualified right now because I am currently in this role and doing the work. And I have been nominated by my peers to serve in the leadership role as Mayor Pro Tem for the past year. My background is in business administration. I have a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration, and I have over 13 years of business experience managing properties, both residential and commercial properties, and handling the budgets over millions of dollars per property and understanding what it means to run a business and maintain the budget while providing core services that are much needed. Thank you.
Mr. Brials, what makes you a strong candidate for this position?
Thank you to the League for putting on this forum. The work you do is very important. I was appointed to the City Council in September 2020, so I have a year of direct experience in the role. Before that, I was the Chair of the City's Arts and Beautification Board on the Snohomish County Planning Commission, on the Board of Directors for the Kiwanis Club of Mill Creek, and a member of more community organizations here. My experience at the city, community, and county level will enable me to work with our state and county partners on joint projects. I, my family and I are very happy here, and we plan to raise our children here. We've got some young children, and we plan to stick around for a long time. So we're, I'm working to support their ability to grow up in our safe community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Allison, what makes you a strong candidate for this position?
Thank you. Thank you for putting on this forum. I really appreciate the opportunity. I am an 11-year resident of Mill Creek. I'm a lifelong resident of Western Washington, and I absolutely love this community. I have a business background. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Business Administration. I've worked in engineering and in program management at the Boeing Company for nearly 30 years. And it's the business experience that I've had that I believe positions me well to be able to serve as a council member and add some levity there. I've had to manage very large budgets and make business decisions along the way about what to fund and what not to fund, and I believe that is a major component of what we need to do as city council members is determining what gets funded and what doesn't get funded. Yeah, that about sums it up. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next question is, what are the biggest challenges facing Mill Creek? And what are its greatest strengths? And we'll start with Ms. Vidneal.
Thank you. The city is currently facing a couple of big challenges. First and foremost, we are at a point in our history where we have relied on mitigation fees from building new buildings in order to fund our government, and we are at a point where we are out of land. So we have to think strategically in order to bring in new revenue streams and businesses in order to provide the services our residents want. We also are getting ready to have some tough negotiations for the fire contract. So this is gonna take some, lots of work and lots of negotiation skills in order to make sure that we get the best services for our residents so that we can provide them the necessary service that they need. And finally, we have to deal with the infrastructure and growth. We have got to have a plan for the roads so that we can get traffic in and out as the areas around us in Snohomish continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Brials, what are the biggest challenges facing Mill Creek? And what are their greatest strengths?
Thank you. Growth is both a challenge and an opportunity for our city. If we don't manage it well, our city services could begin to suffer. If we do manage it thoughtfully and well, our local businesses and residents will reap the benefits. And as to our strengths, our community is our greatest strength. We have many volunteer members in our service organizations and on our advisory boards providing their expertise over hours and years. Every person who adds their voice to these boards makes us a better city, better able to meet the challenges of the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, Mr. Swett, what are the biggest challenges you see for Mill Creek and its greatest strengths as well?
Well, thank you. I find right now we are at a point where we can switch off to being a small town to the huge conglomerates that are Seattle and Linwood. And along with that goes all the crime and heavy traffic, which we're already experiencing right now. Our greatest strength is just the beauty of this area. That's the whole reason why I moved here. The schools are great, and I just love going down to the parks and the trails. And, you know, I just would hate to see that all go away, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Allison, what are the biggest challenges? Go ahead.
I'm going to start with the strengths and finish up with the challenges. I believe that the people that live here, that have chosen to call this beautiful place home, are the biggest strength in this community. And we chose to call this place home mostly because we like the green spaces and we like the parks and we like the small-town feel of this community. I've been out talking to lots of neighbors, and that's the overwhelming reason why many of them moved to this community as opposed to a Winwood or another jurisdiction close by. I believe that the biggest issues facing us 2022 is the fire service contract and our EMT services. That is going to be one of the biggest negotiations. And we have to make sure we're bringing value to the patrons and the people who live here in this town. The infrastructure, that's another big deal. We have a lot of noise pollution, and we need to figure out how we abate some of that and maybe.
Thank you. Okay, our next question. What are the issues, if any, in Mill Creek arising from the pandemic? And how would you address them? And we'll start with Mr. Brials, then go to Ms. Allison, Mr. Swett, and Ms. Vidneal.
So this is a great question. We need to learn the lessons from the ongoing pandemic. Most especially for Mill Creek, we learned the importance of reliable and fast internet. Access to reliable high-speed internet service is very important currently for virtual work, and especially as more small businesses across Mill Creek open up online space. The pandemic has caused more people to seek hybrid or full virtual employment, and we need to support this way for folks to work. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Allison, what issues from the pandemic?
Yes, I believe that we have a lot of empty storefronts because the economy hasn't bounced back yet, and that's a major concern here in the city. People miss being able to shop locally for various things, and it's unfortunate that the businesses that moved out before have not been replaced. Their space is still empty. That's a big issue. And I also see an uptick in domestic violence. That's something that worries me, and I think that there could be more done around maybe some education elements that the city could sponsor. Because this situation has been taxing on lots of people. Stress levels go up, and bad things can happen. So making some resources available to manage some of those heightened emotions.
Thank you. Mr. Swett, what are the issues arising from the pandemic, and how would you address them?
I have to agree that, you know, it's taken away a lot of the small businesses. They have just been crushed and continue to be crushed, and these stores are not returning. We need to have some kind of incentive to get them back. I just don't think that just doing nothing is gonna do the thing. I do agree with the crime is slowly going up. We have a lot of the surrounding areas with a lot of the homeless people, and they come through our area to make their money. So we need to continue to support our police and other services. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Vidneal, what issues, if any, arose from the pandemic? And what would you do to address them?
Thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to add nationally, one of the things that has been highlighted is that women are disproportionately affected because we are the ones who are taking care of the childcare. And the pandemic has sent us all home to take care of our children while still trying to hold our jobs. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention and acknowledge that. Second, I'd like to add that the city in general suffered a loss by, from our revenue from passports because they were not able to be open for a while, and this really has hurt the city. And we're gonna have to be creative to fill in some revenue streams. And finally, the city has used CARES and ARPA funds to help the small businesses that are in need in our city because they have really suffered a blow, and we will continue to use the ARPA funds to help them get back on their feet because they're the backbone of our community.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Ms. Allison and then go to Mr. Swett. What measures would you support to keep housing options open and affordable in Mill Creek?
Yeah, so within the city limits of Mill Creek, we do have a number of apartment units that are reserved for people that make less than $60,000 a year. So that is a good addition to the housing options within the city. We also have a large complex where people who are experiencing maybe the least income of all, people that qualify for Section Eight, there's accommodations in the city for them as well. There needs to be more affordable housing, but sometimes not everyone can live in town, right? I wasn't able to live in a big metropolitan area when I was young and had to earn equity to move in closer, right? It's the way it works. So I'm not sure how much more the city itself can leverage against future development or sort of out-of-development.
Thank you. And Mr. Swett, what measures would you support to keep housing affordable in Mill Creek?
Right now, we've got a lot of housing, higher, lower end. We have the apartments that are medium to low income. I probably could, would like to see some more condos. That way you can have more people, but still maintain a certain level for a small town because that's what people expect. They don't want their home values to go down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Vidneal, what measures would you support to keep housing affordable?
Thank you. Everyone knows that we do not have enough housing stock available. And Snohomish County is the fastest-growing county in the state. We have over 250,000 people coming this way. A lot of cities like ours are just, we're out of space. Even, but there's so much growth that is happening in unincorporated Snohomish, which is right on our borders. And it's extremely important that we collaborate with them and find solutions for those areas so that they can help to have, add more of the missing middle. So some of the things that I have been part of was the Housing Affordability and Regional Task Force, and the city actually participates in HB 1406, where we are helping send some of our tax revenue that's allowed to collaborate with HASCO for affordable housing throughout the county.
Thank you. All right, our next question, we'll start with Mr. Swett and go to Ms. Vidneal, Mr. Brials, and Ms. Allison. What is your strategy for working productively with your council colleagues and with members of the public whose ideas or life experiences are different from yours? Mr. Swett, you're first.
Did we get Brials for the last question?
I'm sorry, what?
Did we get Benjamin for the last question?
Did we, Mr. Brials? Did I give you the last question?
No, I did not.
I'm so sorry.
That's all I hope.
I thank you. Thank you, Mr. Swett. Mr. Brials, what measures would you support to keep housing options affordable in Mill Creek?
Right. This is also a big issue here in Mill Creek. We need to use what little buildable space is remaining in Mill Creek intelligently and ensure we balance our community's needs well. We highly value our.
Did he freeze, or did I freeze?
I think he froze.
...housing needs in Mill Creek. I know many hard-working people who grew up or live in Mill Creek who are looking for housing and are simply priced out of their own hometown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brials. You faded out on us a bit there, but I think we got it all.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, let's go to the next question. Mr. Swett, what is your strategy for working productively with members of the public, with your council colleagues and members of the public whose ideas or life experiences are different from yours?
Well, communicating well is all good, but you need to open your ears and actually listen to what other people have to say. And, you know, let them know that you have heard what they're saying. So I just say, open forums. I like the Zoom meetings are nice. You get a chance to hear from a variety of people. And that's how I go about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Vidneal?
Thank you for asking this question. This is one of my favorite things. In fact, I'm known for working with everyone, even those I really don't agree with. To me, it's all about finding common ground. You can always sit down and talk to someone and find common ground and find the areas where you agree on and work to get things done. And I think that's extremely important. And I feel like my colleagues and myself all do an extremely good job of realizing that we're not gonna always agree with each other, but we always have what's best for the city in mind. And we will go in, and you take a vote, and you disagree sometimes, and then you walk away from that vote because it was one vote. And that person that disagreed with you still cares for the city. And that's how I work with others and find common ground and continue to move on. Sometimes you get what you want, and sometimes you just don't, and you just move on. And that's the way you get things done.
Thank you. And Mr. Brials, do you need the question again?
No, I think I've got that one. This is really important. As elected representatives, we represent all the residents in the city. My strategy includes engaging in civil discourse, active listening to ensure I understand their point of view, finding common ground, collaborating, and compromise. I've worked with plenty of people where we don't agree on everything, but that is part of the value of engaging with a diverse group of people to find the best solution. This is one reason I participate in the coffee chats we have had to, and that's to hear more from our residents. I've been really enjoying those and finding those very valuable and the chats I've had with folks out in our community over the last several years. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Allison?
Thank you. Yes, I am a passionate problem solver. So the classic middle child that wants everybody to get along, and no one has a bad, a bad perspective, in my opinion. So even when I don't agree with someone, I am more than happy to listen. I like to try to understand where they're coming from. And if you're talking about the city and if everybody cares about this city, every perspective is important, and there's probably, you know, something in every one of those different perspectives that is valid. And working until there is consensus or a vote is absolutely the way I would work. Everyone can't agree on everything, but it is a democratic process, and there is always a way to come to a solution that everyone can live with.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Ms. Vidneal. What are the most pressing environmental issues in Mill Creek? And what would you propose to address them?
Did we skip Mr. Swett?
Did I do something again? I don't know about this. Your strategy for working productively? No, I think Mr. Swett answered that. I think we're good. Are we good? Are we good?
All right, sorry about that. Thank you. Okay, so you asked about what are the most important environmental issues affecting the city, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. To me, we have a very important environmental aspect that's affecting the city, and it is our stormwater. And we have been doing lots of work with our stormwater pipes to repair those and to get out and have educational opportunities to inform others about stormwater and the effects that it has. Another thing that you don't hear many people talk about is our culverts and their effect on salmon. And we recently, you know, everyone is aware of the state. We lost a lawsuit that we are going to have to replace some culverts in order to protect the salmon. And this is extremely important, and we do have some of these culverts, and it is going to affect us. And we need to be looking out for how we're gonna replace those so that we can protect the salmon. And so these are the two important environmental issues that we are facing as a city.
Thank you. Mr. Brials, what is the most pressing environmental issue, and how would you propose to address it?
Well, this is a big question as well for only a one-minute response. The environment is very important to Mill Creek. I would say that our closeness with nature is one of the aspects that really drew me and my family to Mill Creek and how close we are with our green belts and our parks and our trails. We must protect our green spaces and our parks, ensure our waterways are clean by keeping our retention ponds up to code, maintain our stormwater systems, and encourage our residents to make smart environmental choices. One example of a project I've worked on is through Kiwanis, partnering with Rotary and the Women's Club here in Mill Creek, where we collected soft plastics, like grocery bags, from the community to be recycled into park benches from NextTrex through their recycling program. These kinds of plastics can be hard to recycle and fill up our landfills. So making good use of those is definitely a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Ms. Allison, do you need the question repeated?
No, the environmental issues, basically. I have talked to a lot of residents that are in the eastern corridor of our city, and they're really worried about the wetlands and what development is left to be done around those wetlands. So that concerns me too, as well as any of the other streams that flow through our town, the culverts protecting the wastewater. You know, we do have a responsibility, and as a city, we need to be making all the right decisions so that we don't harm the environment. And I agree with Benjamin. I think most of us moved here because of all of our green spaces and our beautiful trees and all the lockability areas that we have around town. And I just want to see those continue to be maintained. There is, in addition to that, some pollution, noise pollution from all of the traffic that I've also heard from a lot of residents that is really concerning, and I think we need to study that a little bit and see if the, maybe the traffic is flowing a little too fast, perhaps.
Thank you. Mr. Swett, what are the most pressing environmental issues in Mill Creek? And what would you propose to address them?
Well, I have to agree, the water management is definitely a factor. We do have to watch. I live real close to a lake here that just got a lot of construction around it. Kind of worry about what kind of runoff is gonna go in there. I really love our green spaces. I have to agree with Mr. Brials. There is, that's the reason, whole reason why I moved here. You know, it's a small-town feel. We got a lot of green spaces. Mowing down trees, just like their grass seems to be a general thing that seems to be happening. And we need to slow it down, maybe plan around it, and, you know, fix the infrastructure for the water, definitely. I just fixed, they just fixed a bridge on what I call Lake 35th, and I thank them for that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Brials. What should be Mill Creek's plan to deal with existing or potential racial inequities?
So this is a good question, and one where I feel our city has done well, but also has work to do. We can attempt to ensure equal access and fairness to each person in our community. We also need to reach people where they are. To that effect, our city could use a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Committee. To that effect, our city could use a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee. I've sought input from many different people and groups, especially as relates to the DRCC properties and what we can work to develop there, which will serve all of our residents. There's a number of different areas and aspects of that project that could potentially serve our community in a number of different ways. Different groups can really have a lot of different uses for it. And that's one reason I'm really supporting a diverse use of that property. And I think we're coming together on a collaboration that we've worked on so far, and I'd love to see that through.
Thank you. Ms. Allison? What should be Mill Creek's plan to deal with existing or potential racial inequities?
Well, the law of the land for my entire life has been that, you know, we we don't discriminate against anyone. But getting everyone to participate equally is probably the biggest the biggest concern I have for the city. If there's anybody that is living in town that doesn't feel like they should be participating in what the city is planning on doing or in the events or in the recreational offerings that we have, if there's any of that that is a concern, I think we we need to do more to engage those communities that don't feel like they can participate. I haven't heard that being out and about. I haven't heard anybody express a concern, but if anybody brought a concern to me, I would be the first to try to knock that down, get that out of the way, because there is no room for anybody to feel like an outsider in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Swett? What should Mill Creek's plan be to deal with existing or potential racial inequities?
Well, so far I've haven't seen any laws saying that we should be treating people differently. That's not how I live my life, so. I just think that we have a lot of people coming in. I think that if we treat everybody the same as we should, then we shouldn't be having any problems. I don't know if we're going to have to be starting any new groups to to watch over this. I think people are pretty accepting of this town and I don't know that I love every one of my neighbors, so I don't see we're going to have any issues. When they do come forward, we just have to address them point blank and you know, if we need to talk to talk to some people because they're having a little issue, then that's what we got to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Vignell?
Thank you for this important question. You know, really, the way that we address this is to listen because I my experiences cannot I cannot say that I have the solutions for racial inequalities. So what I have done is I have been meeting with minority stakeholders and leaders in our community and sitting down and opening a dialogue with them and finding out their perspective and how they feel that they are treated and what issues they find are important to them. Because that's the only way that we can create policy and make sure that they are included. Another thing is getting taking everything to them. We have to get out there and engage them so that they are participating in our community and coming to our volunteer groups and giving us their opinions. Because otherwise, we don't know what we don't know. So really, it's listening to them.
Thank you. Okay, this is the final question for which you will have 90 seconds. And I will start with Ms. Allison. This question is, what additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of the Mill Creek community?
Well, I think we're we're at a pivotal moment in our city's history, and Stephanie talked about this earlier. But there is not the same revenue stream, and we have to solve for that. There is not much building area left. There could be some redevelopment, but that is not going to bring in the same kind of revenue that has been streaming in over the years. Right now, we have a lot of empty retail space. That's not generating tax revenue, so figuring out a way to attract more businesses, whether that be manufacturing facilities or retail establishments or even internet presence companies, we we have to do more to increase our tax revenue without putting the burden on the people who call Mill Creek home. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the next, Mr. Swett, what additional issues or information would you like to bring to the mill tension attention to the Mill Creek community?
Well, thank you. I'm agreeing with Ms. Allison. There's just not enough space, and our storefronts are empty. We need to find some kind of incentive to bring people in. They can fill these spaces. There's a lot of tax revenue that's not being developed for whatever reason. We need to find out what that reason is and and change it. So I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Vignell, Ms. Vignell? What issues would you like to bring to the attention of the Mill Creek community?
Thank you. I would like to end with something we didn't discuss very much tonight, but public safety is the most important thing that we do as a council. Over half of our budget is spent on public safety. With that said, public safety means different things to different people, so it's important that we are out engaging them and asking them what they're thinking of when they say they need public safety is important to them. It's an important question that I'm asking at the door to make sure that I understand what each individual means when they mention public safety. Also, you know, being a council member, it's not about me, it's about service. It's about serving the community and our residents in doing what they want and what they think is best for the city. It's not about what I want to do. I think that I'm the most qualified for this position. I've proven that I am a hard worker. I am out there asking residents what they want, gaining the pulse of our community. My business background and budget experience is extremely valuable and moving us forward and also in bringing forward new businesses into our community to provide new revenue streams as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Brials? What issues would you like to bring to our attention?
Well, I want to thank the League again for putting on this forum. This has been really great. I do think it's important, as Ms. Vignell mentioned, that we prioritize public safety. That is paramount. That is one of the main reasons why this city was incorporated back in 1983 was that we wanted our own police force. Secondarily to that, but not very far behind, is our public works. Maintaining our stormwater, maintaining our infrastructure, those are all very important to many of our residents here in Mill Creek. That's what I've been hearing as well. My focus is on planning intelligently for traffic and service needs as growth comes to our community while operating cost effectively. I'm in favor of helping our small businesses to succeed at doing business in Mill Creek, attracting new businesses, and filling in some of those spaces that have been empty since even before the pandemic came to Washington. I will continue to work to maintain the safe and friendly community, which makes Mill Creek such a special place to live, work, and thrive. I'm proud to be endorsed by many local leaders, including Representatives Lovick and Berg, County Council Member Jared Mead, former County Council Member Terry Ryan, the Snohomish and Island County Labor Council, and Sierra Club, along with several others. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The League thanks these candidates for joining us and for running for office. A recording of this forum and others will be available on the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County website and YouTube channel. Find the links at LWV SnoHo, that's S-N-O-H-O dot org. And we encourage you to explore additional information about these and all candidates. The Snohomish County Voter Pamphlet will be mailed to residences starting October 13th. Vote411.org is sponsored by the League of Women Voters and is another good source for nonpartisan voting information. Finally, general election ballots will be mailed on October 14th. Election Day is November 2nd. Please vote. This concludes our candidate forum, and again, thank you all for joining us.